Good evening, welcome to our May regular school board meeting. We're grateful that you're here in attendance. We will call this meeting to order. And we'll have a pledge of allegiance by the Mr. Schultz and an invocation by Kelly Boyer. Please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the principle which stands one nation under God. It is called forth to be just as for all.
Our dear heavenly father, we're grateful for your opportunity to be here this evening to conduct board business and school business. We're grateful for all of our students and our staff. And we ask you to please bless us as we prepare for the summer months. And we hope that everybody will be safe and that that will help to rejuvenate us and get us ready for the next school year. We're so grateful for all our blessings and we say these things in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you. Item 3.1, approval of meeting minutes. I believe these are the April meeting minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll second.
I have a motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. You guys ready for a lot of motion and seconds?
Yeah. We're not gonna be able to take a box seat today.
I failed to recognize that Stacy Anderson and Paul Wyatt are absent today. And we wish them well in their absence. Item 4.1, ratification of expense and payroll vouchers, tax credits, and activity accounts.
I move to approve the financial agenda items as presented.
I have a motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 5.1, I don't believe we have anybody for...
Yes, sir.
6.1, kinder presentation.
Hello.
Hello.
I'm Valerie Kobzewitz, kindergarten teacher at Whipple Ranch Elementary. This is my student Samaya Castaneda.
And I'm Mrs. Sean from Linden. And this is McKenna Fawcett.
So we're gonna talk about what we do in kindergarten a little bit. And then both of these sweet girls are going to read a short book for you all. Okay, so in kindergarten, we learn independence. We identify emotions and feelings. We make friends and build relationships. We laugh, we sing, and we play. Right, maybe? We solidify structure and routines. They learn to write their names. They learn to identify the letters of the alphabet. They learn their letter sounds. They learn to blend sounds into words. They learn to read. They're now reading decodable books for the most part. We do quarterly assessments. We add and subtract to 10 and count to 100 as a benchmark. Some of the curriculum that we're using right now for our ELA instruction in class is Open Court and Hegarty and UFLY at Whipple Ranch Elementary and over at Linden.
And at Linden, we just got a new program, which is along with Hegarty, but it's a bridge to reading program. And it's a science of reading endorsed that we've been taking this year. So it's really been a nice program. It's really been a game changer that we've seen with the kids and how they're reading and how they're learning. And then we do have some learning dynamic books that they're reading and along with the benchmarks that they have, we kinda have the same.
And so like how she spoke to the success. We've seen the same success with the UFLY program that we have instituted at our school. And like she said, just amazing success, tremendous growth, the most growth that I've seen in my students in eight years that I've been there. So we'll have them go ahead and read a couple of books. And then I'll talk about some data. So Samaya, go ahead and start, baby.
The sad cat. A cat saw a big rat. The rat had a top hat. The rat had a red car. The cat was sad. The cat had no hat. The cat had no car. The cat had fun. I mean, the rat.
Rat fun.
The cat did not. The rat was sad for the cat. Got in the car. The cat got in the car. The cat and the rat had fun. The end.
So good.
Bake a cake. Kate and Nate will make a cake. The kids will make dad glad. The kids will make a cake. The cake will make dad glad. The... The cat ran, runs. The pups make a mess. Kate takes a cup. Nate takes a cake pan. Kate and Nate makes a cake. The kids make a mess. Kate and Nate bake the cake. Kate and Nate wait and wait. The kids are glad. The kids take the cake to dad. Dad has the cake. Kate and Nate ma, made dad glad.
So as you can see, these kids are amazing. And a lot of times when they come to us, it's a lot of first separation from their parents. So we gotta get them acclimated to the classroom, just used to coming to school. And to see the growth that they have in fall for letter sounds, our kids were at a 2.91%. In winter, 67.9%. And in that spring benchmark, 85% for their letter sounds. The growth is amazing. What we're doing is working. And we're just really proud of our kids.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're proud of you.
Yes, you're awesome.
Can I come up and give us a high five?
I wanna go get you lunch.
Come up and give me a high five. So good. You're so smart.
Good job, Mac.
Well done, guys.
Good job.
Good job.
You did it.
Good job. Thank you so much for making that presentation. And I hope you guys know how grateful we are, not only as a board, but I'm sure as a community for all of you teachers and what you do for our kids and their development. So grateful for you.
Especially this teacher appreciation week.
Right.
They're representing eight different classes, right, of our kindergarten, two out of Linden and six of Whipple. So that's our kids and our teachers right there. So it's pretty cool to celebrate and show off. So great.
Thank you so much for coming.
Item 6.2, music student achievement recognition.
So I've got nine amazing kids that are with me here tonight. And we would just like to recognize them as our choir state champions. And we have one student who's not here tonight, Max Johnson, who made the All-State Orchestra. And he is the first student ever from the Sholo School District to qualify for the All-State Orchestra. So congratulations to him. He's at symphony rehearsal tonight and unable to be here, but we wanted to go ahead and recognize him and the work and effort that he has put in. But these nine kids behind me were part of a 200-member choir that participated at UofA April 11th through 13th. And to get there, these kids have to do a lot of work. They start working on their solos in August. They are constantly working on sight reading daily. I pounded in their heads whether they like it or not. They practice it daily. It is a constant process. And then they have to audition in January to be in the region choir. And they were among, we had 45 kids that qualified for the 100-member region choir from our school this year, which is really exciting. Some of these kids were section leaders and in the top 10s and top fives from Sholo High School. And then they were able to audition for All-State in March, where they went up around 700 kids to audition for those 200 spots. And from our little school, we had nine of these kids qualify to be a part of that choir. And so Eva Cornellson, soprano. William Brimhall, freshman. Eva's a junior also. Williams is a freshman, made it as a tenor. Tyler Hall is a sophomore, made it as a bass. Haley Robinson is a junior, made it as a soprano. Cannon White, who made it as a tenor, he's a senior. Rosalyn Hunt is a senior, made it on alto. Clara Tregaskis is a sophomore, made it on soprano. Tate and Brewer is a senior, made it on tenor. And Lincoln Taylor made it on bass as a sophomore. Or junior, sorry. He was sophomore last year that made it. Anyway, we just wanna recognize these kids for the job well done. They got to sing for three days with Dr. Jason Ferdinand from the University of Maryland. And just the concert that they performed at University of Arizona was absolutely breathtaking. I was in tears by the end. It was just a stellar performance. And the representation that they gave of Sholo High School was incredible. And I would just like to recognize them as our music state champions. So congratulations to them.
Congratulations. Cynthia, are we gonna talk about Phantom tonight at all?
That's up to you. This is an All-State presentation.
If it's up to me, we're talking about it. And I don't wanna take anything away from your accomplishments and what we're talking about right now specifically. But were all of you involved in Phantom?
I'll bet this one. She's a little busy.
Okay, that's okay. I have something to say. So if you have something to say, go ahead and...
Well, first of all, I just wanna thank the community for the support of Phantom of the Opera. It was a large undertaking. And with my team, Julie Turby is the music director and Becky Eagle as the choreographer. And then Jody Ramel on set construction, Amy Wong on set design. And then we had Carson Celine, who did the costumes, and Wheat Wetten in the technical department. It was truly a team effort to take on that huge undertaking. Phantom of the Opera is the summa of all musicals. It really is. And for our small school to be able to handle this was a massive undertaking. And then with Nick Pulsifer leading the orchestra as well, I don't wanna leave him out. But it was a team undertaking. And we sat down and we knew based on the talent of these kids and the other 41 who aren't here tonight that were a part of that cast, we knew we could do it. And we truly believed in them and we knew that it was possible based on their abilities and skills. And we challenged them for six months and worked them. And we made them put forth the effort and they all rose to the occasion. And as a director and as a teacher, there's nothing more satisfying than seeing the work that your students put in and knowing that they have reached that level of performance. We've received comments that it's better than Collegiate and even some professional productions that people had seen. I've received comments from all over. And it's very humbling to me as a teacher to see that. And then to see the support of the community, eight standing ovations at eight wonderful performances. And these kids are to be congratulated for the work that they did. They were the ones that did the work. We supported them and they just rose to the occasion. And I'm super proud of all of them and I love them bunches, so.
Kelly, Melissa, do you guys have anything you wanna say about it?
Amazing. Loved it. It was beautiful. Everybody did a great job. Thank you.
I went twice. I'm not the only one I know who went multiple times. And I'm really glad I did. It was amazing both times. And I can't believe, several times, and I heard other teams, these are high school kids. These are high school kids. And it was amazing. Very well done, all of you.
So I am weird maybe, because I sat there and I watched the sound guys that were to my right. I was paying attention to Mr. Pulsifer down there. I spoke to some people who worked in the pit, who played and whatnot. And I was absolutely amazed. I was utterly, and I know it doesn't take much, but I was amazed at the production that you put on. The incredible talent that we have in our staff members and our musicians, the sound people, all the people that you named, and especially you students. I mean, I, you know, I sat there and what I thought was, who needs Broadway when we have Sholo High School? Seriously, I thought, who needs those people when we have the students that we have in our high school, our junior high, and our elementary schools? It's incredible. I mean, it was emotional for me to sit there and watch you guys just exude your talent. It was just, I don't know what other word to use, but incredible. I was just blown away. And I'm not a cultured guy so much, but you guys just did great. And there is, I don't believe there's anything that we could say to properly express how great you guys did. Incredible. I mean, I've just, people in the community can't stop talking about it. I mean, you've had that much of an effect on people. And I think that's great. And, you know, I've been, I've had kids in this district for, gosh, 20 some odd years. And I've seen a lot of plays and a lot of presentations that you guys have put on. And you just, you're better and better and better every time you do something. It's just great. And I did not want this night to go by without making sure that we said something about your greatness. So thank you.
Kelly and I, before the meeting, were literally over here going, where on the agenda can we talk about Phantom?
I know.
We need to talk about Phantom at some point.
We have to address it.
Yeah. We decided now.
If you kids wanna say which parts you played in Phantom really quick, we'll let you do that. So Lincoln, we'll start.
I played Raul. Lefebvre and Passerino.
I was just ensemble.
I was the Phantom.
I was Christine.
I played Fama.
I was Bob too.
That was awesome.
Yes.
Many of our leads are standing here tonight, so.
Super job, guys.
Well, it was truly on behalf of the whole group, we have, we've talked about this. And we said, this was a gift. As a directing team, we knew it was a gift. And it was a blessing that was given to each of us. Sorry, I'm still emotional about this. Because these kids are so special and what I get to do is really unique. And what I get to have every day in my classroom is this caliber of student, and it's wonderful. And they gave their hearts. And that's what we told them, give your hearts and share your love. And they gave themselves. And so what you got to experience was their gift and their love for each of you as an audience member. And they will tell you, they're grateful that they got to do that opportunity and have that chance to share their love of music and performing. And as a teacher, it was a gift to me, and I know it was a gift to the community as well. So I also wanna thank these kids because they're incredible, the whole cast and crew. And I hope it's something that this community remembers for a long time. And we are still gonna be doing other musicals. This is not the end.
And we're gonna remember it until your next one.
And you'll remember all of them, but this one is a very special one. And I'm just grateful for these kids. So thank you for your support, everyone, and all the love that we had from the community to make this happen.
And it truly was a gift to all of us and to the community. So thank you for putting in the work and the effort and the love. Because you could tell it was, it was truly a love for them to give to us. So thank you.
And I can't help but think that I know I'm never gonna forget it. And all I did was sit there and watch it. I'm willing to bet that all of the kids involved, this is going to be a real standout memory that they will have for the rest of their lives. So thank you and everyone else involved for helping give that to them. I'm really excited for them that you get to have this memory of this amazing thing that you're involved in. I'm really excited for all of you and proud of you. And so thanks to everyone.
Thank you.
Cynthia, could you tell as you were, you know, from day one, the practices it built, could you tell that you had something special happening?
We knew we had something special before we actually did the auditions. That's why we chose this show. We actually...
I meant, I meant their performances.
We knew.
I know the play itself, but I mean, I just, I'm guessing that as you saw them develop as they were practicing the play, I would guess that you saw...
And these kids knew that this is the biggest musical that has ever been performed. It really is. And they knew that it was a big undertaking, but they wanted it. And they wanted it so badly. And somebody said, man, you just conquered the state championship of all musicals. And I said, yeah, we did. And they did an incredible job. But because they wanted this so badly, they were willing to put in the work and the time. And there was a lot of work. There was even some blood, sweat, and tears as, you know, fingernails broke and nails, you know, and you get hammers and saws and cuts and sword nicks and different things like that. There was some of that. But there were lots of worries. But at the same time, these kids came to every practice with positive attitudes and they were willing to work. And about three weeks before we opened, when we started running the whole show, they were just cranking through it. And they were running that thing like it was just something they had been doing forever. And we knew then that we really had something special. We've known all along as the directors that we had something very unique and something very special. But this was going to be something that was going to be spectacular. And we recognized that and we just couldn't wait to open up the doors and let the audience in. And that first night was definitely exciting. They all were.
Will you take our, for lack of a better word, our feelings to the rest of the crew?
I will.
As the cast, please, and let them know how grateful we are.
We will. I will definitely share with them. And thank you guys again for your support. And again, to the community, thank you for your love and support of this. It was truly an honor for us to perform.
You guys broke a leg.
We did.
Till next time.
Yeah, and congratulations.
Yeah.
Thanks, guys. Come on and say hi, please. Come on and say hi. Congratulations. You did a great job. Good job. Good job.
Good job. Thank you. Congrats.
Good job, man.
Good job, Tyler.
Good job.
Congratulations.
You're awesome. Congratulations.
Thank you. You were great. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you for representing us so well. Thank you, Cynthia.
Can we all can do a picture?
No. We're out.
Thank you very much. 6.3, business office finance update. We have Karen with us.
Yep, I'm back. Okay, well, we've been talking a lot about the business office these last 10 months. So it's, we will continue to do so and continue to give you more information. So just a couple of updates. I know that over the last couple of months, we've been talking about FY25 as our fiscal year is gonna be coming to a close. So as we embark upon all of the school year, year-end work, I would like to say this is when it, yes?
Can we ask you to speak up as much as you can? We're having trouble hearing you.
Oh, absolutely. Is this better?
Speaker is not you. Yeah, but they can't do anything about the speakers. So any bit you can speak up would be helpful.
Okay, I will try to talk really loud. Hopefully this comes better. I'll call, I'll call out all the way from Gilbert down here.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, so a little bit, what I was going to just share is as we are kinda coming to a close at the end of the school year, this is really when everything in the business office, if it hasn't already been in high gear, everything kicks into high gear. We will be getting ready to start our closeout procedures for FY25, which is really kinda wrapping up all of our expenditures for FY24. But we are also in the process of getting everything set up and ready to go for FY25. So what that means is from just a straight-up accounting perspective, we create our new database for all of our requisitions, all of our payroll. We're setting up payroll procedures for our FY25. All of the contracts that the governing board has recently approved, all of those are being set up for FY25. We will be in the process of getting all of our requisitions in, all of our purchase orders in. We'll be bringing to you a proposed budget at the June governing board meeting and asking you to approve that at the July governing board meeting. So I can just share with you, have grace in our business office right now, because this is when, you know, it gets, you know, super chaotic, because we'll be operating out of two fiscal years. And everybody will need everything tomorrow. So we'll just be very busy. We are also in the process of getting a lot of trainings set up, where we will be working with our principals and our administrators, our finance team, our finance secretaries on all of the procedures that we have been working on so aggressively with our compliance needs. So establishing what all of those procedures are, so people do have the right direction and the right resources on what the proper procedures will be for all of our financial traction, all of our financial transactions for FY25. So that's just a little bit of a snapshot as far as what will be coming down the line. You will see in the next couple of board meetings, a number of different action items, including our contract renewals from a procurement perspective, sole source approvals for FY25, things such as that. So there'll be much more coming to you at the June and July governing board meeting. So I'll be happy to answer any questions, 'cause I can hear you, even if you can't hear me as well.
Any questions?
I do not. No, thank you.
Again, just thank you so much for everything you've done to put us on the right path, direction that we're headed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 6.4, superintendent report.
Hey, thank you. So I have six different items on here. And the very first page is the, the number one item is the IT student online access safety information that you were looking for. Also, our IT director had said, Kevin, if you'd like me to be there, which I said, I appreciate him being here just in case you had some deeper questions than what the summary of what I provided for you. But we are, our main filtering software is called LineWise. Over the years, different districts will change their software. Sometimes they'll go with ones that are even stricter in terms of what they can hold out or let in. That can be problematic, because I know that one of the bigger districts that, with experience, that can be an issue, 'cause the kids, the students and the teachers can't access things. So sometimes you have to trade off a little bit. But LineWise is actually a very good piece of software for us. And it actually even goes as a component where it tracks or monitors different texts that might lead to some mental health things that we wanna work with that kid. So it's an exceptional piece of software and it does a good job for us. No software, however, is perfect. There is ways, I guess, if somebody's good enough at it, to get around no matter, no matter what it is. But so we also have that Sophus XG Firewall, which is just more for the cyber end of it. It doesn't necessarily deal with students a whole lot. The Google Workspace does a little bit, also does some of that in terms of tracking or making sure that certain places that kids can't get to. And I thought one of the more important parts of this particular topic is the administrative work, where they've been talking about kids with their phones and having access through their phones, which that is different. The phones are different than our hardware that we provide for kids with our computers and things like that. So currently, they can get on our, on our internet. And that's going to change. At least that's the plan. That probably isn't gonna be without a little bit of struggle with some people, 'cause that's not what they're, you know, it's change. It's not what they're used to, but we think that that's a good idea for a couple of different reasons. It'll allow the internet to work a little quicker and it'll go just a little bit further towards the safety end of what's accessible, at least at school, on different devices, including their phones. They can still get on it, 'cause they'll have their own, especially when that cell tower gets there, you know, they'll have their own, but they won't be able to get through it, through ours. And I think, I'm not entirely sure, maybe Hal could answer that, I think our software can still monitor kinda what goes on, potentially, maybe not, but potentially, if it's coming through some, through the internet, it still may be able to track some of that. Do you know that for sure, Hal, or am I kinda way off base there? On our network, okay.
Well, because if they're just using their cellphone and data, that's the same things they could have access to no matter where they are.
Correct.
It's not, we're not giving them any extra access by being on campus. If they're, if we're not letting them use their, their devices on our network, which is what you're saying is going to change to.
That's correct. Yeah, so currently, it wouldn't be very useful. But once the cell tower is out, then that will become a bit of a problem again a little bit.
But again, they could be accessing the same things at home then.
Absolutely.
Or at Circle K or anywhere.
Yeah, that's, you know, that's not in this Sholo, that's anywhere where there's internet, where they have access.
If in their family, they decide they should have a cellphone with data, then that's what the family decides to open themselves. If in their family, they decide they should have a cellphone with data, then that's what the family decides to open themselves up to, and it's not, we're not increasing any exposure.
Nope. So we're, we're in pretty good shape there. We're actually looking at having to spend a little bit extra money on the cyber end of things, uh, which is pretty darn expensive. But we're in good shape in regards to this student access.
Hal, do you have anything to add?
You did a good job with the narrative, I thought.
Thank you for the information.
The narrative was great, and I appreciate that information. And, you know, I think we always probably need to just put out there that it's important for parents to be, um, cognizant of what their students are accessing on their own phones and personal phones, and we, we can't really be held liable or, you know, um, responsible for that, because we, as family members, need to be watching over that too, and ensuring student safety.
Thank you. Thank you, Hal.
Um, a couple of updates on a couple of grants that were recently received. Um, Mrs. Claudia Layton and I think some others worked on it. It was mainly Claudia, though I think that was, was, uh, looking for some money for different furniture items and some resources for the new Cubs program. And she didn't think, she said, "I have no way I don't think I was going to get it," as she put in and, and got a grant that will help her to buy some of that furniture and resources. So, um, she was very excited about that. I think we're, we're putting about $5,000 towards it. It's a match grant, so it's about 10 grand for, uh, for those resources and some furniture. So, kudos to them. Um, and then also with WMI, I recently received a grant, which is bit sizable, more sizable, about $146,000 worth, uh, which is called Project Momentum. And so that's partly where the, the math teacher that's later on in the agenda, where that money will help go towards those kinds of things. And I think that's fantastic to get that kind of help. And just a little bit that I've, uh, researched or kind of become more familiar with that project, um, or with that grant, it's, it's very, um, robust. And it's, they're, they're very successful, because they know how to do it. The only thing with this particular one is that's with traditional schools. So this is kind of new for them to move into the world of, with how we're, um, providing curriculum and working with students at WMI. So it'll be tricky. We kind of, they'll learn, have something to learn. But the success coming in is very good. It's just going to be, it'll be new though for them. Uh, you were also provided with a strategic facilities, uh, walkabout spreadsheet, those biannual spreadsheets. I think those help to keep everybody up to date on what's going on, uh, in terms of our facilities. I don't know if we'll continue to use those. We have that excellent spreadsheet that was, um, developed prior that we also use with our committee. But we can take some of that same information and then move it over. So it's a little redundant. I think it's really good when the principals are a part of that as well, because they got to be aware of what's going on in their buildings. And the head custodian and those kind of people are, are involved. And it's, it's just, it's just helpful for everybody, I think. From, for me, it does. It gives me that information. So these, these may go away in terms of the specifics, uh, spreadsheets, but I think Mr. West kind of likes them too, so kind of hopeful they, they might keep them. But in any case, we're definitely getting on top of the facilities. Um, it's not without, you know, still some struggles. Um, but it gives you an idea of what's going on. So I don't know if you have any comments on it, but you can see some of the things that are crossed out. Can't necessarily tell unless you go back and look at the old ones to see what's added, but-
Some of them say "add new" next to them, which I assumed were new things.
That, that's correct. Yeah. Um, the Safety Committee update. I just provided the minutes for you in regards to the work that's going on there. You can see a number of different things that are happening. The next meeting is planned for July, just a little bit before school starts. Um, I also wanted to share with you the Professional Development 24-25 calendar. Um, you, you know, you go, "Well, why do I need to look at that?" Well, I think it's important to see how organized and well structured and the work that's going on with, with, uh, our curriculum instruction director, just all the administrators and teachers. Um, that, that shows a strength in terms of how they're organizing, what they're planning and going forward to do in regards to professional development, which we all know is extremely important towards a quality system of providing that kind of support for our teachers, who then are going to affect the thousands of kids, so. It's, the calendar says-
Wonder that more things will be added to as you kind of make decisions about things?
Yeah. It can change, but it's, it's that initial work to just kind of know where we're headed. And then I don't know when I originally sent this out, but I added some information about some track athletes. So if you have that up on the computer, you'll see that. Um, I just wanted to share a little bit of information. Uh, we did have two state champions. One was Mariah McNeil, state champion 100-yard dash, very smooth, fast runner. Um, and then Bryce Adams won the state 300 hurdles, is a champion in that. And that's a gutsy, tough, very athletic race as well. So the whole thing's pretty darn athletic when I think of track. It wasn't necessarily my thing. I wasn't, uh, given that kind of speed and strength and all that. But, um, if you look even at the bottom, overall, there was eight school records broken. So that's pretty impressive. That seems like a lot in one year to me. I don't, I'm sure that's above average. Um, 34 different athletes that qualified for state divisional meet, uh, for, for the state meet, I believe. So, um, Audrey Wilson, uh, was, I think, if I'm reading that correctly, I'm not sure, but I thought, is she a division champion four different times at the high jump? I know she won it last year, um, and tied for third this year. And she was selected to jump in the state of champions at, uh, the Mesa Community College. So they're still doing some competing. Is it Dolan Rollins and Porter Patton were Povault State third and fourth place, respectively? Um, Carter McCombe, Disco State fourth place. And then the boys' four-by-four relay team took third. That's with Bryce Adams, who was the 300 hurdles kid, and Jayden Waite, and Dolan Adams, and Jacob Altop. And Ethan Beeler, uh, took fourth place in the 110 hurdles, at a time of 15.3, which I know that's pretty quick. And then the four, uh, boys' four-by-100 relay took state fourth place, uh, with a school record of 43.5. That's Bryce Adams, Jacob Altop, Ethan Beeler, and Jayden Waite. So that's pretty darn impressive. Um, I'm not used to, Arizona has the four-by-800. That's quite a, a race to watch. And I know I watched our girls compete in that, and they did very well too. I think they ended up fourth. And they, uh, in Arizona, they only bring, or the fifth, maybe it was. They only bring four to the podium. But, yeah, I'm used to them actually bringing six of them to there, so what? It's a little less, but it's just the way it goes. But, so congratulations to those track kids and to the coaches. They did well.
Thank you.
Okay, 7.1 23-24 Budget Revision.
I'll move to approve the revision, um, that Mrs. Smith presented to us earlier, as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, so this is... There, is this an action item? Because it doesn't say it is.
I believe it is.
Yes, that should be an action item.
Yeah, that's my mistake, Jones.
Okay, okay.
Sorry about that.
Just want to make sure. Okay, so I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions or anything?
No.
Yeah, Karen?
Thank you, Karen. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. 7.2 Dual Credit Stipend Adjustment.
I move to approve the, um, dual enrollment stipend as presented for fiscal year '24.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 7.3 Administrative Personnel/Employment. Is there anything we're going to talk about here, or just?
Well, I move to approve, um, the hiring of Mrs. Shalee Davis as our business manager, as presented, and look forward to working with her.
And with that, um, want to express gratitude to the, uh, interview panel and to Karen Smith in particular for being willing to help us through this, uh, transition here. And, uh, should be noted that our incoming superintendent also participated in that, which, um, I'm really grateful for.
There was, um, there were some resignations in there too.
Yes, there are.
Some that I didn't realize till right now, so that is included in my motion as well.
Okay. Did I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. I hoped you would, after all.
I mean, you are allowed to second.
Yeah, I know. Would you like me to, for the next few?
No, it's okay, but don't forget, you can't, you are allowed. It's not against the rules.
I know. So I have a motion and a second. Any other, uh, discussion on this point?
Well, does Ms. Davis want to come forward and we can recognize her, or?
That would be awesome. All, all in favor? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Doesn't exist. Step up here so we can meet you and, and the, uh, people, the community can see you on-
Glad to be here, Miss Davis. Be here with you guys, and I'll be here on Monday.
Great.
We're very much looking forward to working with you.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you so much. Item 7.4-
Did we actually vote, or no?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
We did, didn't we?
You're okay.
She wants to make sure I know I can second. Okay, 7.4 Classified Personnel/Employment. Is, does anybody want to go through this list, or are we okay with what we have here?
I move to approve as presented.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion also passes. Um, whoops. 7.4, nope, that was what we just did. Sorry, my computer went a little crazier. 7.5 Classified Transfers, Resignations, Terminations.
I motion to approve as presented.
I'll second. Wanted to get in there quick.
First time I've heard you do that.
I have a motion and a weak second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 7.6 Certified Personnel Employment.
Excited to see the new hirings.
Just going to say so.
Nice, long list.
Yes.
Yes.
Are you moving to approve?
Yes, I have a motion to approve, as presented.
And I will second.
I have a motion and a second. Um, also, I, I hate to point out one person, because I'm grateful for everybody, but I'm really excited to see Tanner Marsh, considering he's really, really, really homegrown. You know, and I'm, I'm grateful for that. As I've, have I, as I've sat back and just seen him grow up, literally, we have. And, uh, develop into a really cool young man, you know, and, and my, my child associates with him through some sporting events. And he has shown some really, really cool leadership as a, as a, as a young man, adult, with these other young men. So I'm really, I'm really grateful to see that one, along with all the others. So, uh, with that said, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. 7.7 Certified Transfers, Resignations. I just did that. Why does my computer keep doing this? Um, Classroom Site Fund Performance Plan. Did I, seven?
We did the 7.6 already. Now we're on 7.7.
For some reason, my screen keeps flipping back and forth. I apologize.
I like, I think it works better if you hold it this way personally. Do you want to try that?
I'm going to try it right now. Okay, 7.7 Certified Transfers, Reg, Resignations, Terminations.
I motion to approve as presented.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion Transfer, Motion Transfers. Motion passes. 7.8 Classroom Site Fund Performance Plan.
Nice to see something where it's so, um, the, the vote on it was so highly approved, so it's nice to see. With that said, I move to approve the Classroom Site Fund Performance Plan as presented for the 24-25 school year.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 7.9 Procurement Threshold Approval.
I'll move to approve the, um, procurement threshold as presented.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. Excuse me, please. 7.1 Tips Consortium-
7.10.
7.10, sorry, 1.10, okay, 7.10. Tips Consortium Purchasing Agreement.
I move to approve the tips agreement as presented.
I'll second.
Any discussion on this topic? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 7.11 WMI Math Teacher Position.
I'll move to approve the WMI Math Teacher Position as presented, and congratulations on the grant, um, allotment. That's wonderful for us, so.
And is there a second teacher in there already, or is it just Mrs. Roach? And then who all do we have in there already?
We have the counselor.
Counselor.
Para.
Next, we now will have-
This Roach.
It's two paras.
Two paras. Okay, good. So this will, but this will be a big help too.
Yeah.
To be able to focus on math. Yeah, I, did I second yet?
No.
I second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 7.12 First Reading Policy 4-108 Return to Work.
So, Mr. St. John, the only, um, change to this current policy is the fact that we're allowing classified to partake as well?
The two, probably the two things would be the percentage from 83 to 90, which still keeps us even as a district. And the language that would also include classified, so they could do the same.
Okay.
Could you see all the different red? I had to print it out to be able to see the red stuff.
I did not.
When I was looking on my, on the screen, I couldn't see the red parts unless I
I didn't.
got on my laptop and printed it, and then I could see where the red things were. Do you want to look at it at all, or?
Well, yeah, this is the first reading, right?
This is the first reading.
Yeah, so I'll motion to approve for first, and then if I could see it later.
This one also says there's no motion needed. Is, is it, if it's just first reading, we don't need a motion or an action item? Okay. 7.13 High School Secretary Extended Hours and Continued Archive Work.
I'm glad to see this continuing, so that we're getting ready to move, uh, to a different format.
Well, the study runs the race, right?
That's right. So I will make motion to approve as presented.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 7.14 Off-Contact Professional Development Activities.
Um, I move to approve as presented.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this at all?
Total support.
Yeah, it's great. Glad we're, I, I think teachers usually do these things every summer anyway.
Yeah, and we need them too.
It's nice that we can be-
What is it? Two curriculums? Just went over this in the meeting. Two of them are curriculum-related ones, I think, of PVA.
Right, for music and, um, what's it, English? Math, math. Math, yeah.
And then some PDs.
It's great.
Did I second?
You did.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 7.15 Related Services Salary Schedule Addition.
Makes sense to me. I'll motion to approve as presented.
And I will second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 7.16 Out-of-State Field Trips.
I move to approve out-of-state field trips as presented.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Just for information, girls' basketball to University of San Diego for a, um, it's just a, a training, right? Yeah, camp.
Yeah, it's okay.
And then another one at Utah Tech. And then the volleyball team to Utah also. So all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 7.17 School Properties Disposal. It's quite a list.
Motion to approve as presented.
I will second.
I have a motion and a second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. So this one here, seven point one eight, gifts and donations. For whatever reason, this didn't show up on my, when I was looking at it earlier this week. We have a donation from Cholo Youth Recreation Sports Foundation of three thousand dollars to be utilized to purchase incentives for students for the junior high PBIS program. And then donors choose for pencils. And Navajo County donated a thousand five hundred dollars for the graduation party. So we would like to express gratitude to all of those folks for their generosity and helping us to provide some, you know, some good things for the junior high kids to help improve behavior and then also the graduation party. So I'll entertain a motion.
So motioned. I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Seven point one nine, June regular board meeting from the thirteenth to the tenth.
And that's so Karen Smith can be here?
That would be the reason to change it, yeah.
So that she would be here in person?
Yeah.
Right? So if we move it from the thirteenth to tenth, that's Thursday to Monday, when would we expect to view the agenda beforehand and whatnot? What would be your schedule for getting that to us Wednesday, the week previous? Wednesday?
Yeah, I can get it to you whenever you want. Yeah. Yeah. Sometimes a few things get added though. It just, you know, let's just expect, I mean, especially if it's disposal or, yeah.
Things that we got to.
That Wednesday before, John?
More than a day or two ahead is good.
Yeah, I know. It's been not good lately.
I wish, I wish Stacy and over here, I'm hoping that this.
To give opinions on it.
Yeah, I'm hoping this won't be an issue with their schedules.
Right.
But at any rate, I'll entertain a motion to change that.
I'll move to change a June regular board meeting to June tenth from March, uh, from June thirteenth.
I'll second that motion. If there's no further discussion, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes, June tenth. Somebody better remind me of that.
Okay.
I'm looking, I'm looking over at you.
I'm putting it in.
Hopefully I'll remember to put it in after, afterwards here. Item seven point two, future agenda items. Do either of you have anything?
I do not. Thank you.
Was last month you talked, talked about doing a survey? Did you guys work on that?
Yes, we're finalizing it and Courtney and I are getting together on Monday and plan on sending it out on Wednesday.
Great. If you need any help, let me know. I have a date that I heard.
Will do. Thank you.
Can I, can I just run something by you? I, I've had opportunity to attend baseball games because my son's been playing baseball. And I've had a lot of people come and complain to me about the National Anthem. A particular song, the particular, I mean, not song, but the particular group and singer and everything. And then I had someone approach me about some music that was playing at the softball game. I don't know if you heard about that or not. So I, I'm wondering if we need to actually have an agenda item about this or if this is something that we can use it about a, a study session maybe after the, even after the new figure comes in? Because at this point, we're done.
Right.
You know, we're not going to get any more of those music issues. What would you, what would your thoughts be? Wait to do it as a work study session?
I think that makes more sense.
Okay, cool. Courtney, would you do me a favor and write a note?
Make sure that it's included in discussion.
Yeah, so that we don't forget in July-ish probably. No, Wendy, yeah. Yeah, if you would, please just take a note so we don't forget. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn until June tenth.
I will so much.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you all very much for attending and coming out and sharing with us.